Well, hello free people of the Rocky Mountain region. My name is Brandon and welcome to this Free State Colorado interview. The mission of Free State Colorado is to promote a culture of liberty, freedom of the individual and a free market. Today I'm joined by Jessica Fenske, a social media influencer, liberty political activist and candidate for our Vada City Council. Well, Jessica, I hope you are well and thank you for joining me today.
I am well and thank you for having me.
Well, Jessica, how did you become politically active?
I would say it goes back to when I first started volunteering, which wasn't necessarily politics, but I got involved with the land trust in Douglas County, Colorado, volunteering and eventually I was on the board for that. And they, you know, it worked a little with the government. So I got to go to like some government shindigs and meet government people because there was an open space program that worked with it. So I think that's probably where I got the first that bite to just like kind of be active. I didn't necessarily knew I wanted to be so politically active. So then once COVID happened, you know, everything just kind of was out of control and it was wrong. And something hit me, something bit me with the community was growing online that, okay, I can do more. And out here in Colorado, we have a great group of people like yourself. So it would kind of helped, kind of helped you get over that. What do I, how do I do it? How do I get involved? You know, people were here to help. So then once I found there was this avenue for it and it was easy enough. Yeah, I just went for it. And it's a good time. It's, it's, I call it my therapy.
Well, I can understand that completely. You know, it is very relieving in some way, you know, to be able to speak your mind, to know there's other people who agree with you out there, that you're not totally isolated as isolated as we were doing those COVID times. You know, we're not necessarily isolated philosophically from other people who saw something wrong with what was happening.
Yeah, that was, I mean, that was the silver lining was just finding a different group of people that is kind of agrees on this freedom thing completely, even though there's other things we may not agree on. We knew that the government interference was not correct.
Definitely, yeah, something was fishy, something wasn't right. And it was a good awakening time for, I think, a lot of people.
Yes, and again, I think it got a lot of people more active. I don't know, I know it's different in other places. But I felt, you know, with the whole Trump thing in 2016, however, the, the media was just trying to get everyone to think one way or the other. And I think the COVID, again, with the silver lining was it just woke a lot of people up that, okay, there's not, there is more to this and we can agree more. We have more of a community than we think, even though they're trying to divide us based on getting shot or not. So yeah, I'm thankful for that. I really am thankful for the trajectory of my life because of it now.
Well, it's great. I think silver linings are so important, you know, so much negativity in the world these days, especially after over the last several years. You know, it's nice to be able to say that there's some positivity out there as well.
Yeah, you try. That was always my thing even before COVID was, I would say, like, I just tried to be the, the good. You know, you just want to put the good out in the world. There's so much hate. You can accept people, you can love people without having to hate people, without having to be their best friend or keep them around even, but you don't have to spread the most all the negative energy and hate. And yeah, the positivity has been great. And I really think it does help, you know, call it woo woo or whatever, but it just does help everything to be better. The more positive you could be about it.
Oh yeah, I agree completely. You know, focusing on positivity and kind of trying to block out some of that negative in the world can be pretty challenging. And I imagine it's even more challenging when you're running for office. So why did you decide to run for city council?
Okay, so you know, it's always been on my mind to, you know, that's the only way you can, if you really don't like the government and how it's working, the only way you can fix that is to get involved. I mean, we all say a vote counts, but if you really want to try and make some influence in it, you really have to get involved. So actually Merle Hendrickson had filed already to run in district two of our bad and he was, he's a part of our Jeff Co LP county affiliate. So we see each other every month. And he mentioned he wanted to do it. So I was, I just out of curiosity, I looked in district four and it was up this time too. And I was like, no, no, you know, I was not going to do it. But then Jacob, Lori, our campaigns director was texting me and he's like, you know, if you're first to file, it looks pretty good. I think you're in a good district. There's a good chance to win. So I'm, I'm someone who has the kind of life where I have the time for it and the energy for it because most people don't. That's why most people aren't involved in local politics is because they don't have the time for it because it's, it's difficult. They don't even know, like, it's hard to know what's going on. So I've, I just was like, all right, I have to, I have to walk the walk. So I did it. So that was part of it. It was just from my own guilt on top of wanting to like bring something new to the government, my local government and to probably the state of Colorado and probably new. I think my style might be just completely new to everybody. So I think that's, that's probably a part of it too. But just seeing, because I, I've been a little bit influential online. So if I can do that online, to be able to do that in real life and get more people involved in local politics too, that kind of fed into it whereas, okay. I guess that's probably how I chose to do it.
Yeah, well, I think you, you brought up a great point about people not having time. You know, some of these issues we've deal with politically here in Colorado, and I'm sure everywhere else are so complicated and nuanced. And there's so much background and details that a person really has to know in order to, to fully grasp the picture. And it's tough, you know, I think that's one of the biggest challenges that average working people have to, to have a voice in politics is how do you know what's going on? You have to dedicate so much time and energy to it. So I think it's important for, you know, people like yourself, candidates, uh, running for office to, to kind of take that mantle up and say, hey, I'm going to learn about these issues. I'm going to get involved and I'm going to try and be a voice out there in, in, in the campaign season, but also in office, in government and trying, and trying to make an impact that way. So I think what you're doing is very important that way.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I'm trying. I know other people have do where they meet with public and stuff too. And I would love to do that more. I would love to even more people just watch the YouTube, um, you know, the live meetings and whatnot too. Like can spark some people to get a little more curious on that aspect. That's good too.
Definitely. And I think local government has proven to be so important over the COVID years, you know? It seems, it's so frustrating, I think, for a lot of people to, to see what's happening nationally, sometimes even internationally and just feel so powerless because there's nothing a person can do about it. You know, even at the state level in Denver, it seems, it seems kind of a challenge. But in your local city council and your local community, you know, I mean, I'm sure you've seen it. Not a lot of people pay attention, not a lot of people attend these meetings, not a lot of people watch these YouTube videos of the city council meetings. So the opportunity for just a, a one individual or a small group of individuals to make an impact is, is massive, you know?
Yeah, I hope so. And I hope it helps people just to, yeah, pay attention more. Cause most people get really acquainted with the city when it does something bad to them. Like they're doing a huge road construction project out here on 72nd and it's affected a lot of people. There's a lot going on now and it's lasting longer. And now there's a fight maybe with the railroad there. So there's all this stuff that goes on that you don't know about just driving past yours. Matt, because you're in traffic, but you can actually find out about these things. It's not as easy. Again, if I can make it easier for people, I'll do everything I can to do that. But yeah.
Well, you talked a little bit about your social media influence and some of the success you've had on Twitter in particular. How has your, your life on social media influenced or motivated your political aspirations?
Um, I think, I mean, really a lot of it because during COVID I was on Twitter and that's how I got connected with more LP people. I really wasn't, I wasn't politically involved before, before COVID as far as, I didn't know what was going on. I was just as guilty as everybody else with not knowing what's going on locally. Or, you know, only paying attention to what they're feeding us with the federal stuff, et cetera. So yeah, really getting on COVID, it didn't necessarily shape it all. It just gave me an outlet for it and it gave me people, the right people to meet and the right organizations to get involved with and the right pushes to get involved with and the different people. During COVID, I started a meetup at my house and that's still going, that chat is still going. And I felt that was just an important way to build community because building the community is huge. So having that social media for that definitely helped shape to like, you know, you gotta bring the people in and have your secret meetings. It's away from the government like they did in the taverns back in the day, right? So that, that's probably really how it got shaped. I don't think I would have gotten involved. I would not have gotten involved with COVID, didn't happen to this level that I'm involved. And I definitely wouldn't, I wouldn't know who I know now without all that and Twitter. So it's definitely been a big part of things.
Well, and I think, you know, that, that's really why the government was so keen on trying to shut down voices of liberty on Twitter and Facebook as we saw over the years, you know, why they were pushing Twitter to ban certain people like yourself, because they didn't want people making those connections, right? They didn't want those communities of resistance, those pockets of resistance to form. You know, they were trying to silence the dissent out there and, and it didn't work. And it kind of backfired them in some ways, I would think.
Yeah, I think it really backfired because it woke a lot more, not necessarily woke more, but made more people more vocal. So it made their friends kind of see what they were saying. I have friends I would never have thought would agree with me that just see me like saying what I say against the government and they're like, yeah, actually I get that and they agree with me now. So definitely a silver lining with that. They wanted to push us all online so that they could monitor all of us way more than, I mean, the fact that they closed the bars down and everything is just obvious to me. They wanted everything monitored. And I do wonder with some of us who are getting banned so much, like they had to see on the backend, maybe some algorithms, you know, where they could see our reach, where I'm a very normal person with no connections, yet I still have this reach. So they definitely sought people out like that. And now people are getting banned again. I'm surprised I haven't been banned again yet, but crossing my fingers on that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but you know, I think it's also provides an opportunity for people to get together in the real world again, you know, before any other type of new lockdowns or anything like that happens. You know, in Colorado, we have so many great events like Liberty on the Rocks in Denver and the Jeff Co Libertarian Party meetups and other meetups across the state. So it's, it's good to see some communities forming outside of, of the internet as well.
Yeah, and a lot of different coalitions with, we had that Tabor thing in January and I met so many people that I wouldn't have met otherwise and they've helped sparked and helped, helped me a lot with everything going on with my campaign. So yeah, they are very thankful for that, that meeting in line offline and leaving the house, which is, it is hard to do even in, like even in normal times before COVID, it was hard to leave the house, right? It's hard to go do stuff. But like you said, we have so many great fun events. We have the two Liberty on the Rocks, all the couple of different, you know, we have a couple of different county affiliate meetings. We have, we are change hazard thing every month or more. And the Americans for Prosperity has stuff going on and Tabor has stuff going on. We've had all these people kind of crossing over to give information and it's, it's been really beautiful to see just the building of coalitions beyond, we have a bigger goal right now. So the, you know, left and right isn't the most important thing at this moment.
Yeah, you know, there's a, like you said, a community out there, you know, this whole network of, of individuals kind of connecting for the first time in many cases. And I think it's really exciting. I'm pretty optimistic about the future of Colorado. I think there's, there's a lot of upward potential for the liberty community and the liberty movement to grow.
I, I completely agree. There's things that have happened and that are going on that we've been noticed for that I'm like, okay, we're making a little, we're making a little dance in their, their sheltered bubble. They're starting to pay attention to us, even though they don't want to, but, and I know so many people for so long have given up on Colorado, which I understand. I can understand to some extent you want to, my parents moved to Colorado when I was six because they wanted to escape another, like wherever they came from, from Chicago, understandably why they would leave there and they came to Colorado because Colorado had such a free vibe to it. And, uh, uh, you know, if you wanted to be more libertarian, you can do that politically out here. Just leaving people alone, not using the government and each other. And I feel there is a, there is this huge energy that's building now post COVID, post a lot of stuff that a lot more of us have connected. Like I said, we built all this energy up and I'm, I'm super hopeful too. I'm hopeful like we'll get more people to move here from the liberty side of things too. Because this was the first year or last year was the first year. I don't know if you know that in a long time that more people were leaving than moving to Colorado. You know, we had that whole decade where we were just, the immigration was crazy coming to Colorado and that slowed finally. So, cause so many people left because they weren't happy with Colorado. So hopefully we get some more people to move in that are a little more liberty minded.
Definitely, yeah. I'm, I'm very hopeful for that as well. And I think there could be, you know, the efforts of, of people like you. We have Aaron Lamb Libertarian Mayor in Keansburg, you know, other libertarians running for local government offices across the state that could help, help drive people here, you know? If we show that some winning is possible here on some local level, it really can inspire some more people to get involved and make that move.
Yes, I've heard that online, a handful of people being like, oh, this is the one time I wish I still lived in Colorado or Nevada, like to vote for you, which I'm like, that's so sweet. First of all, second of all, it's just, it's great. And there are people here even in my district now who had found me on Twitter and that, you know, they signed my petition, they're friends now and they're like, they get running for HOA. They're, so the more you can, because even these, these offices are good to get into HOAs, special district boards, metro boards, all these local things. People, and those don't even hardly have an election half the time. It's very easy to get into these positions and people, it doesn't have to be city council or mayor. You know, we can start doing more and more of these things. And there's a lot more people out here who start mentioning things like, oh, you know, I should do that. I have a friend who lives in a condo building, which has an HOA and a special district. It's in, so it's in two things on top of everything, right? And so the girl, the gal's thinking she might get on the HOA board and then he'll try and get on the special district board, you know, and they'll be able to do things, have a little more say over this other level of government that's, you know, beyond, it's more government. So yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing there's the energy towards it just from what I hear. And I have a pretty, I mean, it's a lot online, but I do have a lot of our Vada people and Colorado people that I follow, follow me now. So I really am, I feel a true buzz from it, from seeing it.
Well, that's awesome. That's really inspiring and, and good, good news really. So, you know, speaking of your campaign, speaking of running for city council, what would be your biggest priority if elected to our Vada City Council?
Um, so well, first I would like to really learn how the government works. As far as I really need to learn to see the functions of it, to learn the big issues. As far as like a specific issue I'd love to tackle. The first issue I'd like to tackle is a couple of years ago, a track, basically a trash tax was put in. A citywide trash service was put in without a vote. It was the city council just voted for it. But people complained and then they said, okay, you can opt out of this service, but you still pay like an eight dollar fee on your water. It comes on your water and sorbet. So it's just a, it was a fee added, a fee from nowhere. It's just a fee for nothing because you still can have the other trash companies. Some of the other trash companies were cool though and like lowered their price by that, by that eight dollars. So that would be one thing. I, as far as the scope, I would love to, if we could somehow keep businesses in our Vada safe from any tyrannical mandates from the Colorado Health Department or the Jeff Co Health Department. Beyond I, you know, they can inspect, I want them to inspect restaurants and things like that. But just these mandates that could come down if something were to happen again along those lines. If you can make a, protect the city from them somehow. I don't know. I don't know what I could do about that, but that would definitely be something. And definitely, I do keep learning about the mill levy as well. Cause I know mill levy, there's a lot with the city council that can help set that, which is a big issue with property taxes, which is a big issue with property HH, which is what we've got going on now. Um, so that would be, that's going to be up for vote though in November too. So I guess we'll see what happens with that. Hopefully it gets voted down, but, and then I don't have to worry about it in office. Oh, I would love if we could, I know the, a lot of the government people have to take DEI training and it's paid for with tax dollars. And I think that's wrong. I think if people want to go to these DEI trainings, they're free to go to the DEI trainings and pay out of their own pocket. Just like companies pay for it for their own, you know, employees. I don't think the city, any taxes should go towards that. So that would be something I would like to tackle. And I, I personally find those, those trainings to be the opposite of what they're doing. Um, as well as being like a backroom deal where government is just funneling money into the, those corporations that do the trainings and all that. And it's just, it seems to make people worse. So I don't think they're working. So that would be something I would tackle as well.
All right. So I'm really glad you mentioned the mill levy because a lot of people are so unaware of that the local city councils, your local special districts, even your school district has, has really has the ability to lower your property tax bill in your community. And having city council elected officials who can actually make a difference by lowering that mill levy, getting lower property taxes for the people in the community, I think is more important now than ever, really.
Yes, and Natalie, who you have on a lot, she was showing us an example. I have to find it for the Arvada numbers. Just of Lakewood, just of like what the lower, a little bit of a lower mill levy, that just the money that you can save your taxpaying citizens and still be able to function with your government. Your government can still function, you're still getting that money. So yeah, that, that will be very interesting to see up close and personal.
Yeah, you know, I think people don't realize how much money some of these special districts, some of these local governments are collecting from the taxpayers. I mean, it's businesses, sometimes it's these, you know, TIF fees or whatever they call them, PIF fees or whatever, where, you know, it's this extra line item on your receipt when you go to some of these stores in certain developments, you know, uh, some of these firehouses, you know, I love fire, firefighters, of course, is a, is a great community service. You gotta love the firefighters. But at the same time, some of these firehouses, some of these buildings they're building just seem absolutely ostentatious and totally overbuilt. I mean, how much money are these people getting, you know, in, in the community? So it'd be interesting to kind of dive into that and see where some of that can be cut, where some of that money can be returned to the people who are struggling to get by in many cases. I mean, really that's what it comes down to. People barely able to afford their mortgage payment with these record high interest rates. You know, then there's record high property taxes on top of it. Gases through the roof, you know, grocery bills, you know, people need to be able to save wherever they can.
Yeah, and that's, as we know, the government has plenty of our money. They don't need, they don't need more of this money. They need to manage the money they have better instead of coming after us when we're already being pinched everywhere else.
Yeah, that's very true, definitely. So what differentiates you from your opponent, would you say?
Well, my opponent has been in, in the city council position for 12 years. So he's tenured basically, you know, he knows what he's, he's doing. I, but I haven't met him in person yet. I'll be honest, I think Thursday I'll probably meet him in person for the first time. Um, I know I'm, I just don't, I think he's more of a long-term career politician. And I say this now, which everyone says I'm lying, but I do not want to be a career politician. And I know people might get mad at me for that, but I just don't. That's not why I'm getting involved in this, to do some career, some long-term career. I really am getting in as one of the people, to be one of the people for the people. And so that would definitely be a differentiating because he's, he's trying to go, he's, he termed out from at large for 12 years and now he's trying to, he'll want to go at a district and try to term out. And I'm sure be mayor, because I know our current mayor, who's, who seems like a great guy, but, um, he's been in for 30 something years, all these, they've all been there a while. Or they're trying to be there a while. So that, that's definitely different. I don't come from, uh, they don't, well, apparently my, my opponent thinks I'm disruptive. So I guess that differentiates us and he's not disruptive, even though he's, there was an attempted recall on him twice. So there's that. I haven't never been recalled before. That's differentiates us or attempted recall. And yeah, we're definitely different people. He's a family man. I'm, I don't have children. Yeah, I guess that's probably it till I get to know him a little bit more.
Yeah, well, I think what you said is so important to, to people in Arvada and everywhere else is kind of restoring the voice of the people to government. It seems, you know, career politicians like your opponent, I mean, 12 years in government, trying to continue, create a whole career out of it. I mean, at some point I'd have to think that these people lose touch with just the common working class person, you know, somebody who's, who's like we said, struggling to make ends meet, who's just working hard, trying to give a good life for themselves and their family. They're not some politician who's trying to totally socially engineer society and, and build this little community in their own image. You know, so I think that's for me, at least one of the appealing parts of your campaign is here's just a person, a regular person who's going to have a voice for people in government. You know, that's something I think we're lacking and something that I think people can get behind.
And I think the longer people are in government, the better they know the little ways it works. And the better they know little ways to get around certain things. And the more people try to buy them out and all this, you know, the longer you're in, the more of that, that's going to happen. So I, I would love to start a culture too where people are as annoyed to have to run for city council, almost like it's jury duty. And we have this, a totally different kind of person every four years. And it's, it's almost picked like jury duty or something, just to make a normal person kind of get in and bring their perspective from their life. And they're not someone who wants to do politics. So it's, you know, it would be from a different perspective.
Well, that's interesting. Yeah, I think that's a, a pretty cool idea. There's some, there's something that could be found there, I think.
Who knows? Like, I, I know that people don't like it, but I think I can make them like it. I'm going to try and make government look fun.
Well, Jessica, you're a registered libertarian. So how would you describe the difference between a libertarian and a Republican or Democrat?
Uh, so a Republican and Democrat, whether one's right, one's left, that's how we describe it. But they either of them want to use the government to enforce the other side, their lifestyle on the other side. So they'll use that apparatus of force, which is the government to try and force it. And that's why each side fears the other side because of the side supposedly in charge. They'll want to do this and you know, vice versa. But we know now is that there really is only one party and that's the government. And the government will do to the people, whatever it wants to do. So as a libertarian, that's how I feel. I said in that I'm, instead of being on the right or left, I want, I'll defend the right and the left, but I'm going to defend them from, from the government controlling them or trying to force them to do one or the other. And obviously there's so much nuance and argument in that, in what, you know, people think the government should force or shouldn't force. But that's how I view it is just being kind of like a barrier in between the people and government. That's probably, that's it.
No, I completely get what you're saying because, you know, so much, especially being on Twitter or social media. It's like, you see, okay, the Democrats are going after their political opponents on a national level. You know, that's a lot of the, the language that's out there. That's a lot of the talking points. And then you get people who are saying, well, that's what the Republicans need to do. They need to go after their political opponents and lock them in jail. And everybody should just be locking each other up in jail. And I think the key difference, like you said, being a libertarian, it's like, no, people should be free. People shouldn't be having this kind of tremendous political power to, to commit these crimes in the first place, much less go after their political opponents or like weaponize the government against people they don't like, you know?
And then, and in the end, does anything ever come from it? Does anyone ever really end up in jail or anything wrong? Their lives are still wonderful and paid for. And yeah, it's, it's such a joke. It's a joke.
Political theater, kind of like a WWF wrestling from when I was a kid, you know, where they're, they're pretending to be enemies, but you know, you get, oh, they're all at the same cocktail parties, you know, after the campaign's over.
Yeah, exactly. They're all working together technically and yep, they're just acting, faking it. And it is just a production. It's like one of the worst productions out there. She loves sick of it. Again, which is important for local politics because that's all this is at the federal level, which not say like, don't pay attention to the presidential election, but there is so much more to control at the local level. And it really does feel like the pull, the federal stuff is just a constant distraction. Cause it's easy, it's fed to us. It's hard for people to find their local information out. It takes a couple more steps. And we all are human and we know we're a lot, we're lazy people sometimes. And that's really where I feel like where we're at. And that's the purpose of it is the theater. And to take it more of our money as well, as always.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with you. Sometimes it's so frustrating, you know, I've been working the political scene for a while now. You know, you studied, that was my job, right? I was making some money doing some of this stuff. And it seemed like, you know, there are so many good people out there, people who believed in liberty and freedom, you know, these young activist types. But their aspiration was always to get involved in federal politics, you know? Go work for a congressman, go work on a presidential campaign or this or that, because that's what's sexy, right? I mean, that's what's like cool and that's like, you've made it, that's the big time. But at the same time, I mean, I don't think it makes as big of an impact or, or really matters on so much, so many levels, you know? If people are all focused on that national political scene, people neglect what's happening in your local community. And then you get homeless camps in Arvada, you get drive-by shootings and record crime. You get people, communities being destroyed and families being torn apart because people are neglecting to pay attention to the most important parts of our lives, which is what's happening down the street, what's happening with our neighbors. You know, so I think there's, if I've gotten frustrated over the years for people who are so good political operatives and all they care about at, at some point is just the, the federal or national level.
Yeah, even, even in our small libertarian party, it happens to, where I think it's, I, I, I mean, I get it. Can't hate the player, right? Hate the game. Like it's just, it's understandable, but yeah, people get so caught up in that and they don't, I always say this on Twitter ever since, and I've been guilty of this because I wasn't involved for so long. But even just going to your county, your county LP affiliate, if you, if there is one, which there is a lot of places where there isn't one. There isn't even an active state affiliate, you know? So, but that's where the most community is built and the most, you can pay the most attention to what's going on. Since I got involved with LP with you, I mean, I, I know because of your legislative work, which I don't, I'm, the people know that you do help run our legislation program during the legislation session. So, and that's been, I never paid attention to that anymore. Now I know bills, I know how to easily look up. I know how to, I know how to sign up to speak. I want to speak and it's, I know everyone finds even that daunting, but imagine that you can go to your state capital and you can tell these people what you feel. You can on these bills, which a lot of them, they're just putting bills through because they're bored. And so you can go, if you can go speak against it and know what's going on and it's, it's not as hard, even that little bit isn't as hard as just, just not paying it. You just not pay attention to federal stuff so much. And then you could put that much, you know, just that little And then you could put that much, you know, just that little bit of space in your life and go speak against one bill. Like you can do it online through Zoom now and no, I did one over Zoom and I was like, why aren't, why isn't more people doing this? So.
Yeah, it's more accessible than ever. And I think, you know, I remember when you were down at the Capitol speaking earlier this year and. Uh, uh, how did, what was that like, you know, for people who haven't done it before? What's it like to sit? Ten feet away from one of these authoritarian politicians, these people who'd want to take away all your freedom and be able to look them in the eye and tell them how you feel. I mean, what kind of feeling is that?
Like, yeah, but that's exactly how, it's very empowering, even though it doesn't mean anything probably, but. Yeah, you realize, A, these people aren't impressive, they're not special, they're not. They're not like these overlords over us. Um, that would, so it, it kind of brought it into perspective that these really are just unimpressive people pushing paper and making. Them look like they're doing something by pushing these stupid bills through. Um, yeah, it feels really good to go talk to them though, it really does. And whether they listen really or not, I don't know, but it feels really good. I, I tried to always go from like a libertarian stance and say like, if the law was a good libertarian bill or not. One bill I spoke for was a bill to, uh, you probably know the number off the top of your head, but it was one to hopefully. Keep the COVID vaccine off the childhood vaccine schedule. That was the first one I spoke for. You know, all these other people, there were so many people there who were speaking for it too, and that's all it was. It was just one little protection saying, hey, the government's not going to force your, this one thing that we know doesn't work. But no, doesn't matter into your kids. And they, they, it, there was a ton of people speaking for it and they brought facts, they brought figures, you know, this was. Ja- February this year, February twenty-three, so we, there's even more information than ever. And then of course, the people who are against the bill were all government employees, all government health employees or. A nurse that worked at a college or a professor. And they were against this bills, but then that's how it went because of the way the committee was seated, but it was nice to get up and tell them, hey. This is a good libertarian bill, which may sound, I guess. Like an oxymoron, but it's a good libertarian bill because it protects the people from the government and that is our main goal right now, is protecting the people. From the government, because we have to, we already have to protect ourselves from each other, right? Now we need to learn to protect ourselves from the government and that's, this is what I'm trying to do.
Well, that's awesome. I love that line, you know, protect ourselves from the government and. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a call of like liberty activism in my mind is to try and build this. This movement or this pressure on these government officials to just say, hands off, you know, keep your hands off, let us live our lives how we want to. And the more we can do as individuals to get organized and push back, I think the better world we're gonna have, really.
Yeah, and the organizing is huge and I think a lot of people are realizing now. Wow, we weren't organized, but they were very organized, you know, the people, the people who have changed everything, they've been very organized for a very long time. So we are up against that, but the more we're organizing, I, I just feel again, that energy. I think next year's legislative session is gonna be great and it'll be great to go down there as a city council person. Maybe and speak against some bills. I don't know about, I'll say I'm on the city council, but. There may be things that I want to speak against, even our city might want to speak against, because I know they were against some of the state bills. But our battle was definitely against the one that was trying to do the, um, you know, force the high density zoning from the state level. So that I may have, be able to do it on a, for a lot of different people, an actual constituents now too.
Yeah, very cool. I, I completely agree. I've been thinking for a long time, you know, the Democrats control Colorado. Not because their ideas are better, not because they're necessarily impressive people, as you said, but just because they're better organized. You know, there's this whole professional political class, there's this authoritarian agenda that can work full-time jobs. To enact it and to, to keep their grip on power, on political power in our state. And it's so unfortunate that the liberty community is not as organized, but I think that is starting to change, as you said.
Yeah, it just took a little bite in the butt of like, I think a certain age group. There were a lot of people who were fighting for a long time. Especially like, to like, uh, Mr. Bruce who put Tabor in with whatever people's personal feelings on him or not, he worked his butt off and like Penn and all these people have worked for. Uh, we met Penn the other night and he was the. Chair of Libertarian Party in eighty-four, you know, and so now he's the Tabor fan, you know, these people have been working for a long time and I think a lot of them got tired out. And then everyone was leaving Colorado. So, yeah, but there, there is something going on now, especially with the coalitions. That's the hugest thing to me is all that cooperation that's going on too.
Definitely. Well, yeah, it's interesting, you know, as you mentioned, Penn Fittner being the Libertarian Party Chair back in the eighties. And the changing of the guard and all the people who've come and gone through the liberty movement is, is pretty interesting, but. You know, I guess that one of the big questions is, well, how, how do people become libertarian? So how did you become a libertarian?
Uh, you know, the first thing I, I went to, um, the, I just signed up to go to a convention. So like, that's how I first, my first thing. Do you mean like literally libertarian or philosophically?
Uh, either one.
Well, literally, it's very easy. You just go to the, where you register your, for your driver's license and you register to vote and you put it libertarian. And then you start getting involved, which is, it is hard in some places and this is what I'm hoping, I'm, I'm trying to do some. County level affiliate outreach with people across the country right now to. A, connect people because there's a lot of people who want to get involved and there's nothing active. So maybe finding some ideas of how to get certain. People more connected. Um, so that would be literal libertarian stuff. Philosophically, I've just always hated the government, so. Even when I didn't realize it, because and I, I moved out really young because I wanted to be on my own. I didn't want to have to follow rules, even though I was broke. But I was like, it was better being broke than having to follow someone's rules. And also my parents did take me to a Ross Perot rally when I was like, I don't know when that was ninety-three. So my dad says that, he started it.
No, that's awesome. Yeah, I think there's a streak of anti-authoritarianism in a lot of people who are involved in the liberty community, you know, this whole idea of. You don't know what's better, best for me. You don't know what, you don't know anything better than I do. Let me just make my own decisions and having that at an early age definitely sets people up to be. A little bit more libertarian philosophically, I think throughout their lives.
Yeah, and just skeptical and we can, I can still like respect certain authorities and whatnot, but I'm just gonna be very skeptical and not listen. Which it felt like, especially during the COVID, I knew they were wrong the whole time and I, we, I'm right, I was right the whole time as well, so.
Well, it's awesome what you're doing, uh, trying to help national libertarians with their county affiliates and building this local communities. I think that's, that's so important. What's your advice for Coloradans who want to make an impact in politics?
Um, I'd say for, the first thing you gotta do is get out to some sort of, of political meeting that's. Not, and I, and I hate this, I hate the snobby stuff, so not the snobby stuff, like not all the benefits and galas and things that cost three hundred dollars to go do. Those are fun. If you can go to that stuff, great. But uh, uh, just especially if you're gonna go to the LP route, just start coming out to our LP meetings. Start meeting people. I mean, I met, the first time I met Natalie was at a Liberty on the Rocks. Years ago before I decided to do this and even back then she said something like, oh yeah, if you ever want to do a campaign, call me up and I'm like, yeah, no, never, I would never do that. You know, and she's been such a huge help. It's like this, that's, I would never have met her if I didn't go to Liberty on the Rock. So. You really do have to seek out, because I know a lot of people, oh, there's nothing going on. I'm like, well, half the time there is, you have to look though, you have to, you have to go look for things going on. Uh, meeting people, uh, even if you are, if there's something you're interested in, in volunteering in your local community, even if it's not. Political, uh, food pantry, whatever, start going to volunteering at things like that, if you have the time for it. And any volunteering is always fun. All the volunteering I've done in my life hasn't been for like necessarily like. So you know, homeless people or anything like that, but it was such a good time for me at the National Western and at the Land Trust, like those are the best times of my life. Was volunteering. So I would say maybe start doing something like that. Um, and then this, in this, our next legislative session, hit us up just so you can sit in on these. Meetings we have on Sundays, just to hear the bills and start learning the process. I would say that's a huge thing. So. That'll be shout out for, when does it start typically? The end of January?
Uh, it's the second week, it's like the Wednesday in January, it's like the first Wednesday after the second, after the first Monday or something like that. In January, so that first, second week of January.
Is when the legislative session. And just, just joining these Zoom meetings we'll have about that, that'll be, that's a huge thing to help get you active.
Oh, like, and I completely agree with everything you said. I think, you know, showing up, putting in the effort to find the others, you know, find the other people out there who are similar minded. I think is huge, you know, like you said, showing up at those county affiliate meetings, showing up at Liberty on the Rocks, you know, there's chapters popping up all over. Just, just show up and meet people and start connecting. But yeah, you just gotta make, take that first step, I think, you know, people, as you said, it's, it's not always easy to leave the house, especially if you're a contrarian and you think. Nobody else is gonna agree with me, nobody else out there thinks like I do, everybody's. Uh, this or that, you know, but just showing up and maybe you make a friend, maybe you meet somebody who you agree with on a lot of things and then, you know, the sky's the limit from there.
I know I hear people say things like, wow, I can talk freely right now, like they can feel like they just can say, talk exactly, they can say crazy Alex. Don't stuff or whatever, and it's totally fine if you want, if that's where you want to talk about, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, no, I had this experience, uh, just recently as well. There's this great Boulder Libertarian Lunch I've been attending. Uh, very fortunate to be off the, on Thursdays when they have it, when they have it. And it was really interesting to talk to some of these people and they say, oh, this is what I look forward to every week where I can speak my mind and say this to these people. Because my people at my house maybe don't agree with that. And then it was within a day, there was, we had a Northern Colorado Liberty on the Rocks. It was the same situation, these people showed up and. Oh my gosh, it's so nice to be able to talk and say these things and it was, it was just really cool to, to hear that and to say, oh, people are able to get out there and, and know they're not alone, especially today when. People are so isolated to say, you're not alone out there, you know, there's a community of people just, uh, around the corner.
Yep, especially in Colorado, we got a huge, I love our group out here. I always, I can't sing our praises enough. I'm always like a weekly gratitude post, just with. All the amazing people we have and all the people who are showing up and like the handful of affiliates we have that are going and then now to Liberty on the Rocks and. You know, Robbie Stopit, we always just have something fine going on, I felt like.
Oh, definitely. And I think there's a lot more to come. Uh, you know, the future's bright.
Yeah, I'm planning on having, I want to have events in my campaign too, just. Get my community out, there's so many great restaurants and breweries down here, so. I'm gonna, we're gonna just be whipping it out.
Well, if people want to attend, uh, some of these events that you're planning on hosting, or if the people want to support your campaign, you know, Jessica, what can people do to support your campaign?
Um, the best spot, if you want to give money would be jessicafensky.com or volunteer, which right now, uh, basically my whole campaign right now is going, is door knocking. So if anyone wants to come help me door knock, especially because I don't necessarily like doing it all by myself, just safety sake. So if you ever have a couple of hours, you think you could throw it to me during a week, a week, you know, even more in the evening when people are home. Um, that would be huge. So that's kind of, that's probably something I really want to organize is just having a, you know, twice a week, having someone who can walk with me. And so that'd be a huge help. Otherwise, just, just showing up still helps even my campaign or just spreading the word. If you know anyone in Nevada, let them know about me. If you have an event you'd like me to speak at, I'm starting to get more into my public speaking round. I'd love to come talk to people. Uh, I seem to connect really well with people. Uh, so that'd be a way to help me, but mainly jessicafensky.com. And I have some of my videos there for me speaking down at the Capitol and other information.
Cool. Well, that's awesome, Jessica. Well, I really appreciate your time today. I hope you do well in your campaign, wish you all the luck and look forward to seeing some results in November.
Thank you. Thank you for all your help too.